Scotty Anderson.
Scotty Anderson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I completely lost my name. Is here to do our devotion. And who are you? The Church of God of Prophecy.
I'm with Lakeside. Yes, I'm a minister in the Church of God of Prophecy. And I thank you all for letting me have a moment of your time to share the word today. My scripture is going to come from the first verse of Second Samuel, the second chapter. "In the course of time David inquired to the Lord. Shall I go up to one of the towns of Judah?" he asked. The Lord said, "Go up." "David asked, 'Where shall I go?' 'To Hebrews,' the Lord answered." This is a scripture where David has finally come to the knowledge that Saul, who's been trying to kill him, has died himself. And he is getting ready to take over as the king of Israel, which has been his birthright since he was a child. But before he goes to take his crown, he comes to the Lord in just a very simple, everyday question, "Where should I go?" And as this body knows, decision-making carries a certain weight to it. And David is a great example that when we trust the Lord with the small things, "Where shall I go today?", he's very faithful to come through and to bring us through when we have heavy decisions and important decisions to make. And the Lord just gave that to my heart today and said, "That's a great message to share with this group." So if you would, join me in prayer, please. Dear Lord, we just come to you tonight. We just thank you that you are such an awesome Father, that you're a God that cares for us, that you're a God that's always for us, never against us, that you want to be a part of our everyday decision-making as well as the important events in our life. I just pray for this body right now as they are making decisions which are going to impact a whole town. Lord, that you will give them guidance, wisdom, and discernment. Lord, I pray also for our police and our firefighters and our first responders in this community. Lord, that you will keep them safe, that you will keep them protected, and that you will hedge them with your protection when they're on duty and when they're at home with their families. Lord, we just thank you for the love that you have shown to us, Lord. And we just thank you that you are a God that is always, always vigilant. And we just thank you. In your Son's holy name we pray. Amen. Thank you all.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next round.
Here.
Alex Jones.
Here.
David Lee.
Here.
Rob Smalling.
Here.
Chandler Wilkerson.
Here.
All present at the counter. And we have the floor. Next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add the Community Transportation Planning Grant for 2022.
A motion to adopt the agenda and to add the T.DOT Planning Grant to the agenda. We'll have a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Keisha, call the row, please.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four to zero. We have adopted the agenda with the corrections. Don't let me forget that it's on the agenda now. The public comments. Ms. Patricia Hawkes has signed up to speak.
Thank you for your time tonight. I'm going to be brief as to not lengthen your meeting any more than necessary. In light of the recent meetings and the mayor not following the charter and the lack of attention given to policies and procedures that you swore to follow and uphold, I feel in order to restore integrity and transparency to our city government that these citizens deserve, that I respectfully request your resignation. Mayor Smalling.
Is that the end of your comments?
Yes.
Okay. We move into the next portion.
Right in the future, when they speak, they know what's expected was on the agenda.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is the minutes for the 10/26 special call meeting.
I make a motion to pass the minutes for the special call meeting for 10/26/21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the 10/26/21 special call meeting. Ms. Keisha?
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion for the minutes passes. Now we have the 10/26/21 regular meeting.
Make a motion that we pass the minutes from the October 26, 2021 meeting.
Second.
A motion is second for the regular meeting for 10/26/21. Ms. Keisha?
There's actually an error in there. It says special call and it's not a special call meeting. It's the regular, so I'll fix that. Jones?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Minutes for the 10/26/21 meeting have passed. The next item on the agenda is the October 2021 financial statement. Before I ask for a motion on that, do we have any comments or any questions of Ms. Keisha?
Well, we got the motion before we can ask them questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the financial statement for October 2021?
I'll make a motion to adopt it.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the October 2021 financial statement. Does anybody have any discussion or questions of Ms. Keisha about the financial statement?
Is there anything unique to this financial statement for this month? Ms. Keisha?
If you guys will look under the Police Department on page four, line item number 255 above. See, that's way over budget. And the reason for that is for the Citrus software that we installed with our software upgrade that was not budgeted. So it's been suggested that we could add in its own separate line item, like add a new line item and do a budget amendment. So I'll get to work on that and apply that at the beginning of the year.
Separate line item for that software purchase?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's not like our yearly software fees. It was a separate.
It's a one-time?
It was previously.
It's not like the ticketing and everything. It's all connected to the state. And some of the papers that we had to fill out in May of each month, we were doing those manually. And it's like printed all out. We calculate the total.
I believe it had been in a previous year's budget, but we didn't get to the point where we installed the software or the software wasn't working correctly. So we didn't pay the invoice in that budget year. So now that it's doing technically what it's supposed to, we have to pay the bill. So that's how I understand it. It comes to be the operation. Do I have a motion?
We already got a motion.
On the financial statement. Ms. Keisha, call the row.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. The October financial statement has been accepted. There is no old business on the agenda. We'll move right into the new business. And we have beer permit. And I can't pronounce his name. Is that how you pronounce it? LLC DBA Rix Market. Y'all have that in your packets. Everything was approved. There's no reason not to approve this.
I make a motion to pass beer permit.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to pass the beer permit. Ms. Keisha, call the row.
There's discussion, discussion.
Oh, okay. Does anyone have any discussion about the beer permit?
Did you take the input out on beer permit?
I think Keisha has that.
I mean, his background check is right there on the top from the TVI. They're just changing. I mean, they're currently selling beer there now, but they're just changing owners.
Yes.
So all the proper procedures.
Okay. Any other comments?
I don't know.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Beer permit for Rix Market. The next item on the agenda, approval for the IDB to submit the request for proposals for the water rate study. As we discussed at the work study, our most recent water rate study is through this year. And as our previous meeting, we have a great need to identify beyond just the rate structure what that water rate would entail as we grow. And the IDB has stepped up and allocated some funds to do this. And as at the first of the year, we're going to be going, accepting the proposals and to adopt a firm that will do a deep dive, unlike any other we've ever done with our rate study. So that's one of these two proposals. We'll have a motion to approve the IDB.
I'll make the motion to approve for IDB to submit the request for proposals for water rate.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the IDB's water rate study. Ms. Keisha?
Discussion.
Discussion, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I don't.
What was the rate? What was the amount that they were able to set aside? Or is that undeveloped, unknown yet?
I think they set aside $20,000.
$20,000, okay.
For this one study.
Okay.
And what I was at the IDB meeting that night, and it could potentially be more, but that's unidentified at this time. So, okay. Anybody else have any questions about the study? Ms. Keisha, call the row.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
I'm going to identify a conflict of interest here that Andy's my son is president, and I'm still going to vote and go vote yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The IDB's request for the proposals for the water rate study is passed. The next item on the agenda is the request for proposal for the IDB to rewrite the subdivision regulations.
Not for them to rewrite.
For to get a firm hired to rewrite the subdivision regulations.
I move the request for the IDB to submit a request proposal for subdivision regulations.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the IDB to do request proposals for the subdivision regulations. Now, I'm not going to skip over the discussion portion. The planning committee was in the process of doing this last, this previous year. And we got a substantial way into it. But through GNRC, who is contracted to help us with that kind of stuff, they were. It became a bigger project than what they could take on as part of our regular contract. And since then, the need to do a much deeper dive than just what we currently have in place or to rewrite those standards has become much greater and much more complicated than what GNRC would do. Now, they have. I don't have. With this, it's not in our packet with GNRC, and I did provide it at the last meeting. GNRC did do a request to do this for us, but it was limited scope, minimum amount of hours, and half the amount of money that the IDB is allocating to us to do this project. And that was another $20,000 of budget amendment on their behalf. So it will, once going through the process, I think it will serve us greatly as we grow into the future and how we will address some things. Does anybody else have any comments on that? Ms. Keisha, call the row.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
I had the same conflict, identified the same conflict of interest as last, and I'm voting yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
The IDB's request to do this, or request for proposals for the subdivision regulations has passed. Next item on the agenda is to renew the IDB appointments for Mr. Meadows and Mr. Bell. They were. Okay. I'll wait until the discussion. They have a motion to renew their appointments?
I'll make a motion to renew their appointments.
Have a motion? Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Under discussion portion, they were filling in on an interim basis. And this renewal puts them in the cycle with the membership and allocates them to an actual term. So, does anybody have any questions? They were put in those roles not too long ago, so we're all familiar with those agendas. Ms. Keisha, call the row.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
I want to identify conflict of interest again. Yes, I voted. Yes, I voted.
Okay. The IDB appointments for Mr. Meadows and Mr. Bell, that's passed. The next item on the agenda is ordinance 0112021-1. The meeting, conference.
And a motion that we pass ordinance 0112021-1.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Lee to pass ordinance 112021-1. Does anybody have any discussion they want to have about this? One concern.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that it is known that the purpose of this was not to shorten the length, to not have proper discussion. The purpose is to constrict the amount of time that allows us to have a more structured meeting that will give us the ability to hear everything we need to hear and then give us the proper understanding of what we're voting for. And it also saves the time of citizens who may want to participate in the meeting. Thus, the reason that we're just hopefully making a more efficient meeting. And so I wanted everybody to know that. That's the purpose of it. I support it. You know, anything that we have to talk about can be done in an organized timeframe. And so I think if we just begin to structure our meetings, we'll have some more opportunities to really get more done in a smaller timeframe. Now, it doesn't sound right, but you know, if the meetings are purposely established and structured, I think we can get a lot done.
I think it offers an opportunity to improve the quality of discussion that we're able to have at this table amongst us.
The one concern I had, and I spoke with Mr. Bradley about it, is even though the time constraint is in place, as a board, we have, does have the ability to make motions to extend the time limit if we're critically into something that cannot resolve within that timeframe. So that is one of the concerns I had with it has been addressed. And beyond that, I think we can keep it under control, whether or without the ordinance, but it doesn't hurt to have it in place. Ms. Keisha, call the row.
Jones?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Of the first.
Of the first. The next item on the agenda is resolution R112021-1, the 2022 meeting dates. Ms. Keisha prepared this after the last meeting when we decided that we wanted to have that on the agenda. And there are our regular scheduled meetings and our, not necessarily our work studies. Yes, they're both on. No, just the regular meetings, not the work studies. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to pass resolution R112021-1.
We have a motion.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the 2022 meeting dates. Ms. Keisha?
Any discussion?
Okay. Do we have any discussion about the meeting dates?
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee? Yes.
The 2022 meeting dates schedule has been adopted. This will be advertised and it will meet our advertising requirements for all the future meeting dates that are listed. So, okay. Next item on the agenda is the resolution R112021-2, the urban growth boundaries.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution R112021-2.
We have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second that.
The county is about to wrap up this review process of the urban growth boundary. I spoke to it at the work study. Our boundary is not changing at all. But Harrison and McGowan, in the process, have had swapped some areas. And that was okay. But now they're at the time of the state law that says it has to be amended and done. And it'll be put in place. And once it's put in place, it can't be amended at all for three years. But after three years, there's an opportunity for all the cities to go back and amend it. But it's just a formality that we pass it and let the county know that we support this so they can submit it to the state to be in compliance with the state law and the growth boundaries. And if y'all are uncertain what this is, we can dive into that at a later time. But it's not something that directly affects us immediately. But as we grow, potentially, it could. Ms. Keisha, call the row.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Okay. The Urban Growth Boundary Resolution, R112021-2, is passed. Next item on the agenda is the trash ordinance extension. Aaron is not here, but he spoke to us about this at the work study. So do you have a motion to extend the requirement for the trash?
I move that we extend the trash ordinance requirement until March 1st, 2022.
Second.
Okay. Now, motion is second to extend the trash ordinance deadline from 11/22 to 3/1/22. Is there any discussion? Real quick, can you tell us how many trash cans we have?
We have none on hand. We have 200 on order.
Yes. So that, we talked about two weeks ago, that we had ordered some. So it's been two weeks and we don't have any. So the extension is probably very necessary. So, we have a motion and a second? Ms. Keisha, call the row.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Motion carries. The ordinance extension is in place. Will you advertise that in the morning on the city's website and social media? So, okay. Next item on the agenda is cleaning the City Hall and the Police Department. We talked about this in length at the work study. Mr. Bradley, okay, I have a motion for cleaning at City Hall and the department.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to allow for the cleaning of the City Hall and the Police Department. So, do y'all have anything?
You were going to tell us about the, yeah, tell us about what Mr. Bradley spoke about.
I'm sorry. I'll let him speak to it in person because he's here.
If you have any questions, I talked to Keisha about it. I'm not sure what the controversy is about hiring the ones who lead City Hall, but nonetheless, it's something you got the authority to read before votes, or even three votes, I suppose. Everything else is the foremost of my thoughts.
Well, at the work study, we talked about it in detail if it was required or not for us to read it out. And.
I think it was informally bid. And it wasn't the monetary threshold requirement bidding. That was my understanding.
Okay.
And the current budget allows us to continue the contract that was with Ms. Jenkins. Next year, when we reanalyze it, then we might need to consider looking at it because the budget will be different when that reconsider looking at.
You can put it out for bid for the next fiscal year, but the short amount of time this year didn't require bidding.
Correct.
For the amount of things involved.
We have the motion and a second to allow Ms. Jenkins to do the cleaning of City Hall and for the Police Department. Ms. Keisha, call the row.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
The next item, that item, the cleaning of City Hall item passes. The next item on the agenda is advertising hire for the full-time patrol officer position.
I'll make that motion to advertise for a full-time patrol officer.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Advertising hire for the full-time patrol officer position. Okay. Now, we'll move into discussion portion of that.
Now, based on my understanding, this is a, he's filling an opening that is currently on unpaid, late ruck. And I think the chances of him getting his job back are slim to none. And that's why, and the Police Department is shorthanded, and they're needing somebody now. So I don't think, I don't think this other person will probably come back to employment here.
In the meantime, the budget's already there. It's not an issue. Manpower's needed, so it's, you know.
Ms. Keisha, call the row.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Okay. We'll get that done. We can do it through the social media and through his website and all the other publications that, of the organizations that you belong to.
We'll get it in the city paper of the City Association of Chiefs of Police. And we could do indeed, if you all would like, in the past, we've just done those.
And my point to that was we can do all that before. It can start immediately as soon as it can get on the website. It doesn't have to be waited till it's published in the paper. That was a question we had about some of the other hirings that we've done. So, okay. Clear a motion and a second? Ms. Keisha, call the row.
Call the row.
We already voted.
We've already voted.
One minute. Give me just a second.
The chief spoke after you voted. That's what's kind of fair.
Okay. That's right. Because I was speaking to the qualitative time portion of the advertising. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to hire Frederick Nelson as a part-time patrol officer.
I'll make the motion to hire Frederick Nelson as a part-time patrol officer.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
Second. I met Mr. Nelson. He's here to introduce himself to you guys.
Please don't tip her by yourself.
I'm Frederick Nelson.
Reside in Hendersonville. I have about twelve and a half years' experience in law enforcement in Nashville. And, uh, I would like to pursue the opportunity to work here part-time and serve the city.
Only if you tell us the goods on him.
Officer fellow, then I had the opportunity to have Mr. Officer Nelson ride with him last night for the first time for six hours. And he knows how to do the police work, really now all he has to do is kind of learn the city and our paperwork. So I think it'd be an addition.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Nelson has already gone through the process and he's ready to go. There is another gentleman that we interviewed that had the background checks and other stuff done that we'll deal with in December, January. Whenever we decide to have, if we decide to have that meeting. But he'll be starting just as soon as he gets his paperwork.
It may be in January, because his, um, his paperwork should be in a psychological schedule.
Okay.
But if we get him and if we get a full-time slot by the first of January, we might get full staff.
That's pretty good.
As soon as I have the ability to put him on temporary, we're going to do that, so. Ms. Keisha, call her out.
Twelve percent?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr..
Congratulations.
Good to have you.
How to have you.
Next item on the agenda is raise for the full training officers during their training times.
I would really put in place the raise for FTOs during training.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the raises for the FTOs during their training time.
False. We have to specify.
Yes.
Okay, specify. That's a, we can do that in discussion, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
We're on open discussion, right?
We're on open discussion.
Yes, because we have a motion on the floor.
So the hourly rate, uh, the, currently, the hourly rate is seventeen twenty-five, but FTOs would be getting an increase of seventy-five cents, is that what we talked about?
Fifteen and seventy-five were both discussed, so.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we've gotten specified which we want to do.
I need that.
The budget can take either one, correct?
Yes.
Chief, I'll just let you know, I figured both ways. This is not, this would only be, excuse me, when the officers are actually training the people that I'm with. Since we only hire certified officers, you're only talking about a three-week time period, so each person that would be trained, you're talking about a hundred and twenty hours. So if we train Mr. Nelson, the other part-timer that we were talking about, and we hire and train a full-time, um, you're talking about only a total of three hundred and sixty hours. If we did the raise of fifty cents, that'd only be a hundred and eighty dollars for the rest of the year. And if you do it at seventy-five cents, it's only going to be two-seventy. So even if we had a full budget here and we had four or five officers we trained for three weeks, it's not going to be over a thousand dollars. So it won't make a significant difference in the salary.
I'm good at seventy-five cents.
I'm good at seventy-five.
Thanks, that's what most of us see in the video.
Chief?
So do I need to amend?
The eighty-four hours are there, is that programmed or is that just scheduled with, with particular officer to do the training?
We generally, and it may vary, generally, if an officer's got plenty of experience, with most of the ones we hire are going to have quite a bit of experience, uh, three weeks, three forty-hour weeks is usually plenty sufficient for them to get, uh, associated with paperwork and the looking process in the city.
So with every officer, it wouldn't necessarily be for forty, eighty-four hours?
Right, it could be a couple. You make it a rare occasion where someone might run four weeks, but three weeks is a pretty good general average.
Did you want to make that through the motion?
I want, do I need to amend my motion or change my motion?
Make a motion to amend.
I make a motion to amend my, my motion to make the raise to be seventy-five cents for FTOs during training.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to amend the original motion.
To a total.
To seventy-five cents. Okay, Ms. Keisha?
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Twelve percent?
Yes.
The motion to the amendment has passed. Do we have to have discussion on the original?
Only if I want to discuss it, which didn't help.
Ms., on the original, amend the motion, Ms. Keisha, call her.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Twelve percent?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the timeline for the vacant city council seat.
Make a motion to, uh, discuss the timeline for selection of vacant council seat.
I'll second that motion.
Your motion is second to discuss the timeline for the vacant city council seat. What I had done with Alex's seat was I left the timeframe open for the submittals of letters of interest. And I still think that is acceptable in this circumstance. But we need to decide if we're going to do that at the December work study. Or are we going to do it at the December council meeting? Are we going to wait and do it in January? Are we going to do it at the January, right, their scheduled meeting?
I say with, with advertising out there, it's due to the December, do the interviews if anybody's interested at the December work study.
Okay, I didn't know if we were not going to have the, uh, December council meeting, that we would want to wait beyond that to actually make the appointment. And I know Ms. January said that.
I will not present.
She's not going to be present at that work study.
The work study.
So.
I, I, I thought that the January work study meeting would be a, a good date, because December, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, you've got so many people that are traveling and out of town for the holidays that may have had prior plans. Especially with short notice of a council member resigning. I think that January work study would be a, it would give you sufficient time for anyone that's on the fence trying to decide whether or not they're interested to kind of talk it over with their families and make a decision of that nature.
Put us in a rush.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm good with that as long as, I'd say as long as we had the discussion that we were going to wait.
I'm, I'm good with that.
This is a good time to discuss the.
Now, where you go?
Did you officially announce the, the reason why we're having a vacant seat?
No, didn't feel like it was necessary.
It's on video.
So.
I think it's would be, it would be the right thing to do to address the citizens and let everybody know why we're. Because we just got, we just got through with one, and so there, there may be some confusion there.
Okay, that'll point. Earlier this week, uh, Ms. Frazier had submitted her resignation because she has, uh, moved out of the city limits. And of course, as you all know, the language in the charter states if you are no longer a resident, your seat becomes available. And she did submit a letter Monday evening and the seat is available. So are there any more questions or any other things to address in the circumstance that I didn't address? So, uh, while we're in the discussion portion of this, I talked to the, uh, election commission office today about the positions. Of course, they're only, the timeframe for that spot is only through the next election, which is this next November. And Alex and I had talked about it. And so I asked him the questions. Of course, we, we, we readopt, we redone the charter this last year to make that, you know, for it only to apply to the next election. And through the election office today, they can, they talked to me through the process that it's not a special election. It's considered an unexpired term, which the only difference is really the expenses involved in it. Because there is a regular election coming up. So that saves us some money with that aspect of it. But also, as a candidate would apply for qualifying for that, these two positions that are expiring in November, they have to choose either the four-year term that's on the regular election or to qualify for the two-year term. So there would be nothing stopping anyone that's appointed to the position, though, that's through the end of this year to qualify at election time for the four-year term opposed to the two-year term. So they can do either or, but they can't do both. And then also, a situation where, like, the third place vote getter at the four-year term would get automatic access to the two-year seat. But also, if, no, am I correct so far?
No. You, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have the third, the third.
That's what I said, that's, yeah.
It doesn't apply to the two-year term, it's a separate election.
That's right.
And, and there'll be one person that's elected in the two-year term.
That's right.
The four-year term will remain, well, always has with the top.
Well, there's two people now, Alex's seat and Ms. Head's seat. So, but also, for example, if everyone qualified for the four-year term and we only had one person qualify for the additional two years of the remainder of the term, of course, that person would receive the seat. And then after the general election, the council would have to appoint the person for the second position. If everyone, if no, if not enough people qualified to run for the two-year term. So those are probably really complicated things, but those are all questions that were raised in the redoing of the charter to make the changes in the terms. So, uh, there, of course, all those things are not in the charter, but that's implying through the election office how the process takes place. So.
Call for the vote.
So the question is, now you have four council positions on the ballot November?
To, for a?
Two, two-year terms and then two, two, four-year terms, that's correct.
And the people have to qualify for either or. That's correct. So, um, okay. David called a question for the, uh, allow the selection process for the next open council seat to be in January.
I call for the vote.
Okay. Ms. Keisha, call her.
Twelve percent?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will select, we will have, we will accept submit, uh, letters of interest through, through the end of January at the time when we take the vote. Because I'm not going to limit just the time for the work study for someone to express interest. They come up after the work study and still want to express interest, I think we will give them courtesy, allow them to have an interview. If, if y'all feel necessary at that point. But I'm not going to limit the time, right, on someone to express interest in the public seat. Ms. Keisha? Regis? I'm doing it again.
Next time.
We're ready for next time.
Next time, I'm so sorry. The next to last item on the agenda is the GMC to provide the Pleasant Grove Water Study. I amended the, the agenda, I decided to have a motion to allow GMC to do the Pleasant Grove Water Study.
I make a motion to the GMC to provide the Pleasant Grove Water Study.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is something, uh, you guys have not seen prior to tonight, but in October, Greenlee designs submitted a letter to the city to do the, uh, study on behalf of the, uh, developer of the Pleasant Grove subdivision. And, um, they're prepared to do that in one of the four weeks. And, um, a lot of cities, a lot of cities have mechanisms in place that would allow the, uh, developer to pay for these studies. But we do not. So, uh, not to say that he's not going to do that.
Greenlee has asked for some, for some studies and for some, uh, like, uh, fire hydrant requirements and stuff like that for the, for the subdivision. And GMC has presented us with a proposal what they will charge to do that. And they're pretty high on it. Of course, I've got a little inside connection with engineers and, and they tell me it might be just a little bit on the steep side. But, uh, Jeremy, can I say something on your behalf?
Absolutely.
Jeremy, the developer here, I've learned this evening, might be willing to split this cost with us. Am I correct? I want to spend your money, let you debate.
All right, go for it, you're good.
Okay. I concur that that's not a bad idea. But I also know that our engineer cannot work for both. He cannot do both sides of it.
Do what now?
If, if he's splitting the cost, that, that's, the engineer has to work for us. He cannot work on behalf of the developer. But that's.
He'd be working for you, the contract would be with the city most important. He's making a contribution to the city, they'll pay for it. He would not be the employer the city would be.
I'll never try to turn down money.
Well, I'm just saying. So as long as we word it that way, it's acceptable, I suppose. So I just wanted to.
He can, he can come to city hall and hand out a twenty-five million dollar check and say, I'll just to go with this project right here. Then we'll turn, in turn, write.
Okay.
That's a little ripe, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't want to speak for the engineer or the developer in any circumstance with this, to make sure that that was acceptable. And.
I think that's clarified it, I think this is important, make a clarification. This is the person who's been working for the city.
Okay. We have the motion in a second for right, uh, for GMC to provide the Pleasant Grove Water Study. And we've clarified that the engineer will be working on behalf of the city. Ms. Keisha, call her out.
Jones?
Yes.
Twelve percent?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
At that end, conflict eventers cost my son on the green lid, but I'm going to vote anyway and vote yes.
Motion carries. I don't know his timeframe for completion of this, but the reason I had it to the agenda is I know developers won't employ and I believe our engineer is prepared to start the process. And that's why we didn't wait until the, after the work.
Listen to Charlie.
We still got one, sir, I can rock it down here, we're drawing.
I didn't forget this one, man. The Community Transportation Planning Grant for twenty twenty-one is due December thirtieth. The example that I provided to everyone, the first page of the application, it's a very simple, five-question application. The second page is a three paragraph.
You want to get a motion from here?
Okay.
I'll make a motion that, I'll make a motion that we apply for the Community Transportation Planning Grant for twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second for Community Transportation Planning Grant for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, we can skip.
Next.
Did you also add that ten percent of the project cost must be levels of, from the community, from the municipality?
Yes, uh, that's a requirement.
And if you speak to what, our folks are on, what will you use? If you speak to what we're planning to use.
Okay. First page is the application, the second page is the narrative, I'm getting there. The second page is the, the second page is the narrative that is, that is exactly these three paragraphs. We have, uh, done the, um, capital assets improvement process, which identifies several community projects that this would qualify for. But, uh, one of the primary reasons that I want the city to apply for this is, uh, we have great need for the sidewalk replacement. But we also have some needs at the intersections for some upgrades for the traffic signals. And the, uh, traffic signal enhancement grant that is also available with this part of the process, the city does not qualify for. And, uh, a lot of the things that are along those lines, even with the potential developer that we've not planned for or are out of our reach financially, this type of planning process is the only way we're going to obtain those type of funds to be able to. that we've not planned for or are out of our reach financially, this type of planning process is the only way we're going to obtain those type of funds to be able to pay for. And like I said, it's, the, the application is very simple. And we've identified several of the projects already through a planning process. And this grant, if we are awarded, will allow us to expand on that already existing planning process that will help us greatly for the future. And it's all tied to transportation safety. And we qualify for that in some unique ways because we're an abandoned railroad community. That's not listed in the grant, but we're, it's very unique to us more on how we qualify. So we have a motion is second. Ms. Keisha?
Walkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
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 Motion carries?
I think so.
Back up, please, stack up paper.